Good evening. We'll call ourselves to order. This is the Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, meeting of the ASD School Board. Present in the boardroom are members Bellamy, Holloman, Wilson, Jacobs, Higgins, and Donnelly. Online is our student representative Madison, and then not with us tonight, I'm sending her regards as member lessons. With that said, Madison, would you please read the land acknowledgement and lead us in the flag salute?
Yes. We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denian people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denian people have been and continue to be stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madison. We want to thank you for attending our meeting and thank you for supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and School Board. The Board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. With that said, we have a motion in front of us and an agenda in front of us to approve. Is there a motion at this time?
So moved?
Seconded.
Made by Member Holloman, seconded by Member Bellamy to approve the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Member Higgins?
Thank you. I move to add an action item titled FY 2025-2026 Budget Revisions.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Made by Member Higgins, seconded by Member Holloman. Member Higgins, would you like to discuss your amendment to our agenda?
This is a budget revision request because of the last-minute approval for additional funding from the state with the decision of the legislature to override the governor's veto, and the timing of this is critical for filling positions in the school district for the next year, and that starts next week, so we are in urgent need.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Is there a discussion on this budget amendment? Hearing and seeing none, is there any opposition to amending our agenda? Seeing none, the agenda has been amended. Is there any further amendments to our agenda? Is there any opposition to Member Donnelly?
Thank you. Other than a special meeting, I believe we had, we haven't been in session since two really important holidays, the Independence Day and also Juneteenth. And so I would move to add a reading of the first sentence of the Emancipation Proclamation to our agenda and also the first three sentences of their preamble of the Declaration of Independence to our agenda.
Member Donnelly, I appreciate the desire to want to read those items, but my question is, did you submit this before our meeting today?
No.
Okay. We typically only amend our agenda when it's an emergent need, I believe is what our board policy states, and I'm wondering if we could use board comments to honor those very important documents?
Okay, yeah.
Wonderful. Is there any additional amendments to our agenda? Okay, is there any opposition to adopting our agenda as amended? Hearing and seeing none, we have an agenda. Thank you, everyone. We'll move to item B, Student Reports. Our student representative report is up first. Madison, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Thank you. Unfortunately, tonight I am not being able to be in person, and that is due to me still visiting and finishing up visiting family, including my dad, out of town, but I will make a brief report. So one of the biggest things I see is that obviously ASD has reinforced more of phone policies in schools. I've talked to some of my peers, and it seems that individual schools are also making their own policies out of this. I know at Eagle River High School, my own school, we are now making it so all high schoolers at our school cannot have their phones out the entire day, and that includes passing periods and lunch, and the policy is in the locker stored away. I've also talked to peers at South High School, and it seems that they are similarly locking down on phones, but they can still use it during passing periods and lunch, but it does seem that their policies are getting a little tighter on things such as backpacks in schools, which is following what my own school does as well, where we cannot have backpacks out at all in schools. So it seems that some other schools are also following in that direction. I haven't gotten any other news of any other individual schools making the policy their own, but I will say, what I've heard from my peers at my own school and others is that there are some confusion and frustration feelings from these new policies at their own individual schools, whether that's due to not being able to easily coordinate with their peers, leaving outside of school or during lunch, or whether it's not being able to contact their own families in cases of emergency or just checking in, not having that power to do that themselves. But wherever this direction is going for ASD or their own schools, I'm sure it is made to try and include more positive change, but I will say some of my peers have reported negative feelings about these changes, and there is definitely a lot of discussion about that. But other than that, it seems that like a lot of students in our community are excited to start the school year and make a lot of change. I know that for the Alaska Associations of Student Government, Anchorage is actually going to be hosting this year and this fall, actually, at Alaska Pacific University. So hopefully our own students, including me and a few others at my school and Diven, will have a great time hosting, and many students across the state will have a great time attending in our city. But that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madison. Are there any questions for our student representative? Seeing none, we'll move on to Board Conference and Committee Reports. Does any committee chair wish to check in and provide a report at this time? Member Bellamy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to let the Board know that the AASB had its summer meeting here in Anchorage over at APU, and that meeting took place maybe two weeks ago now. And the primary topics for discussion really had to do with funding, of which we, which that is, I won't say it's no longer an issue, but the reversal of the governor's veto was a primary part of that discussion, along with some discussion regarding the local contribution, the potential local contribution limitations were also part of the discussion. So other than that, I don't think there was any pressing business, other than there will be three seats available for new members on the Board of Directors for AASB, and I'll bring that information forward as soon as it becomes available. And actually, one final piece is that if there are any resolutions that any of us or any district would like to see go before the body, the Delegate Assembly for AASB in November, you have until October 15th, I believe, to get those in. And they have to be submitted online, so if anyone has anything, you can either do it yourself, or you can ask me or ask for my help, and I'll be happy to make sure you have the right form. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. Is there another committee chair who wishes to provide an update? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item C, Goals and Guardrail Monitoring. Dr. Bryant, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we're creating an addition to the goal monitoring report section, and we'll add guardrails periodically throughout the year, similarly to how we present a goal monitoring report, just for the public's awareness, because the Board has had extensive training on this. But really, the goals outline the vision of the Board, what we're measuring, what students are able to do and what they know. The guardrail report reflects the community values, things that should not be happening in pursuit of the goals. So it is a slightly different format. I won't go through the report with the Board one by one. I think it would be more efficient for everyone to take the next two weeks, review the guardrail report, and to submit questions to us in advance, just like you do with the goal monitoring report. So I envision in two weeks, we can have a conversation if Board members have questions on this particular guardrail. So this is guardrail number three, and for the public's awareness, the guardrail is that the superintendent will not allow unsatisfactory employee performance to go unidentified or unaddressed in pursuit of the Board goals on reading, math, in college career, and life readiness. So we're talking about employee performance here, so it should not be surprising that the things that we're measuring are, one, trends in employee performance data, and then, two, the degree of compliance with our principles engaging in training for employee evaluations, and the same type of training for our classified supervisors that are represented in a number of different bargaining groups. So with that said, I envision in a couple of weeks, we could connect those dots and talk about how ensuring that our employees are engaging in highly effective, high-impact evaluations could help us meet our academic goals. So that's my report for today. Again, just a technical presentation. In two weeks, we'll come back to answer Board member questions on unsatisfactory employee performance, and please send your questions in advance. I think that's all I had for this.
Okay. Seeing no questions from the Board, we'll move on. Thank you, Dr. Bryant, to item D, Public Comments. I believe we've got one testifier tonight. Welcome to the Board's opportunity of this evening for a public comment. The Board has set aside a one-hour time slot at the beginning of each meeting for public comments. During public comment, the Board will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. The Board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings. However, the public comment should be productive and must be structured and civil. ASD conducts its meetings under Robert's Rules of Order. We would encourage you to look at the requirements posted at the entrance of our boardroom to include, do not attack a member or speaker's motives, no profanity or foul language, referring from disturbing the meeting. And if you have handouts to share with the Board, please hand them to Ms. Sullivan, who's seated to my left. Additional details can be found at the handout located at the door. That said, our first and only testifier tonight is Mr. William Baxter. Welcome, Mr. Baxter. You have three minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Okay, is it? Okay. I'm William Baxter, and I've been in six prays with my trucks and that, and I represent FFA and 4H and other things, and I've been in the three prays this summer, and I represent FFA. And one of the other things, what's good about FFA, Future Farmers of America, is they have a good leadership program. I've been AMWAY for many years, and I would say AMWAY probably has one of the best leadership programs at one time. They had Road Ride Deer Bounders, they had Network 21. A lot of your network marketing companies have really good leadership programs, and I see FFA have that same type of thing. And I see these kids, these kids are in FFA. The people that are head of chapters, they work really hard. A lot of times when you're FFA, people that are working at FFA chapters, they're doing things in the winter time. They're going, they're working in the fair and get ready for fair and 4H too, not, the fair is getting ready for 4H. And so FFA, I would think, is probably one of the best things part of the school system. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That completes public comment for tonight. We'll move on to item E, our Consent Agenda. Is there a member who wishes to pull an item from our consent agenda for discussion before moving to approve and adopt our consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Made by Member Bellamy, seconded by Member Holloman. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing none, Ms. Sullivan, the vote, please.
Student Representative Madison?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
President Jacobs?
Yes. Consent agenda is adopted by a vote of six to zero with the student representative voting yes. Move on to action items. All right, and our first and only action item is ASD memorandum number 038, FY 2526 Budget Revisions. Member Higgins, do you have a motion?
Yes. Well, I've just made the motion, but I, let's see, give me a second. Yeah, move to approve. I just don't have it in front of me. I have another memo in front of me. Give me a second.
All right. There's a motion to approve ASD memorandum number 038, FY 2526 Budget Revisions. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay.
Is there a copy of the memo available? Is there a physical copy available? There was no notice of ahead of before this.
Yeah, fair enough. I'm going to ask for a 10-minute recess while we get a physical copy, and then we'll prepare Member Higgins to read the full title of the memo into the record.
Okay.
Just 10 minutes ahead of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Send it back.
Thank you, Member Higgins, for your comments on the motion. Member Bellamy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I will be supporting this motion. We are thankful to the legislators that voted to put the money where it needed to be most. And I think that with school starting, this is, for me, it's an emergency. I don't know that we can wait. And I think the superintendent needs to have the authority to get our schools ready for our kids. And so I will be voting to support the motion. And, and I do realize, Mr. Chair, that this is not according to our usual process. Uh, but we are accessing the emergency provision of our policy so that we can get this work done tonight. So I'm hoping that it will pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bellamy. I'll jump in the queue just to state that I support the motion. And then from a process standpoint, I've coordinated with the superintendent to confirm that we'll have a, a full plan for the entirety of the additional funds that we can budget for, which the board will reapprove at a future meeting using our typical notice and approval process. Member Holloman?
I'd like to echo the comments of Member Bellamy and President Jacobs that this, this is urgent, given the, the value of having staff in place on the very first day of school. Normally, we would notice this in advance and take it up at a second meeting. But because there is such a limited timeline, I think it's a prudent and beneficial thing for us to do and fully support the motion.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Is there additional comments on the memorandum? Member Wilson?
I also wanted to say that I'm supporting this memo and greatly appreciate the legislators who stepped up to make sure that we have those additional funds for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Any additional member comments before we vote? Member Donley, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to say that this parallels the testimony we had at our work session earlier today of what the most immediate needs are, particularly concerned with bubble classroom sizes. That's where classrooms, because of the demographics of a particular area, have gotten really excessive in size. And this hopefully will allow the superintendent and his team the flexibility to address that and try to keep these classrooms from being ridiculously large.
Well said, Member Donley. Any additional member comments? Before we vote, Member Donley, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to say that this parallels the testimony we had at our work session earlier today of what the most immediate needs are, particularly concerned with bubble classroom sizes. That's where classrooms, because of the demographics of a particular area, have gotten really excessive in size. And this hopefully will allow the superintendent and his team the flexibility to address that and try to keep these classrooms from being ridiculously large.
Well said, Member Donley. Any additional member comments? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Sullivan, the vote please on AST memorandum number 038.
Student Representative Madison?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Jacobs?
Yes.
AST memorandum number 038 is adopted by a vote of six to zero with the student representative voting yes. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the administration for preparing and drafting something so quickly after our work session. Your efforts are appreciated. That completes our action items. We have a list of non-action items tonight that will be in front of us at our meeting later this month. Is there any board member who wishes to discuss a non-action item this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we have no additional public comment. We'll move on to item I, superintendent update. Dr. Bryant, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, but I first want to just say thank you to the board for supporting our urgent needs that we see in our schools. So we had a very atypical situation that happened this Saturday, which was the override of the governor's veto to education funding. So that means that we learned just a few days ago that the $700 BSA increase has been fully restored. So that means for ASD, we'll receive about $10 million for our students. So this happened very quickly. So what we requested that the board approve tonight was a revision to our budget to deploy about $3 million directly to our kiddos as soon as possible. I think one of the best things that we can do for our students in this moment is to make sure they have access to a great educator. So what we're gonna do effective tonight, and I guess technically tomorrow morning, we're gonna try to recruit as many great teachers as we can, because every day counts. If we would have waited two weeks, we might have lost some great teaching candidates. So because of the board's swift action tonight, because of our wonderful legislators, we're able to make this possible. And if you know of any great teachers we're hiring, please tell them to apply at our website, astk12.org. So that's the new thing that I wanted to share today. But what I had planned to share was just to recap with the community just how, how different of a summer this was, in a lot of ways, not all bad. Um, but it was certainly different. So let's recap this summer. So a few months ago, the legislature passed that $700 based student allocation increase, as well as education policies. The governor vetoed that. So then shortly afterwards, the legislature responded by overriding that policy veto where we had 46 votes to override that veto number one. And then what happened was the governor decided to reduce funding by $200 per student. And I, I feel blessed that our legislature came together and voted their conscience on Saturday, and 45 legislatures provided an additional veto override. That truly was historic. So for context, we have not been able to pull off an override of an appropriation veto since 1987, so well before any of our students were even born, because it's very difficult to do. Um, we're talking about 45 out of 60 legislators. Think about how diverse of those communities that are represented by those legislators. Because clearly, that is not something that just Anchorage can pull off. It's not something that a rural community can pull off by themselves. It happened because across the state, we came together and we said that we need to stabilize our schools, and we need to stabilize them now. So I feel indebted to our legislators that made that happen, and I'm very thankful for the board that's allowing us to take action tomorrow morning, to start to right this ship. So, um, to make that part short, the original funding has been restored. And we're going to start deploying the $3 million effective tomorrow. And then we're gonna come back to the board in a couple of weeks with a plan for how we'll utilize the rest of the funds. I do want the public to be aware that we do have some big headwinds that are still emerging. So that's why I want to recap what happened with the federal government earlier this summer. Because over the Fourth of July weekend, what happened was the federal government froze $6 billion that was supposed to be deployed to public schools across the country. And ASD was one of those districts impacted, and we were on track to lose millions of dollars for critical services for our students. This, again, this happened over Fourth of July weekend, so it was unprecedented. But I want to thank my team that really came together. Some of them were located in different parts of the country. Some of us were on vacation, but it didn't matter. We put everything aside, and we figured out what we can do for our kids. So I feel really indebted to our staff that worked around the clock for many, many days to, to do a lot of things. Um, in fact, I had to get involved too, because you might have read that I filed a lawsuit against the federal government. It's called Anchorage School District et al versus the U.S. Department of Education. And we're proud of that action, and I'm even prouder to report that four days after that lawsuit was filed, the funds were dispersed, or they announced that they will disburse those funds. So we avoided a very close call, because during all of that flurry over Fourth of July weekend, we had to notify dozens of employees. They may not have a job in a few weeks. We literally had to contact people to let them know that they would be laid off in 90 days while they're on cruise ships in the middle of the summer. How devastating is that to the morale of our employees? And what does that say to the institutions that our public has learned to trust over decades? So we've had some big setbacks, and I would be lying if I said that my trust has been restored after that situation. It is not, and that lawsuit is still filed. But I'm very thankful that we were able to get past that initial hump, and those funds will be set out to where they were supposed to go, which is to our children in public schools across the country. So, uh, that case will be pending. I will keep the public informed as that situation comes to, to light. But the, the point is, is that when we stand firmly behind our students, we win, students win, and we can improve the quality of our schools. So thank you to everybody that was involved with that. So all of that was to say that these victories give our students some stability and hope during a time when I'm sure many of us felt completely hopeless. But as the superintendent of ASD, I'm proud to say that I've seen something that I've known all along, which is that ASD is resilient. This wasn't just a coincidence that we got through all of these random crises that happened this summer. I think that our resilience is truly in our DNA as an organization. And the fight is not over. As historic as Saturday was, I don't want the public to forget that 10 years of flat funding and a 30% increase in inflation during that time has taken a toll on schools across the state. So even though things are stabilized for this fiscal year, we still have a structural deficit for FY '27. So we do need to make some hard decisions. And the situation with the federal government makes me wonder, how are we going to ensure there's continuity of services for all those populations, even if there is a change in funding from the federal government in the future? I can't predict that future, but I will tell you this. I will be prepared for that possibility, because I will not forget what happened over Fourth of July weekend. I won't. So with that said, my call to action to the community is really, we need to protect our progress as a school district. And I will say, in all of these years that we've been advocating for funding, I, I think some of the story of our successes as a district has gotten lost. And my commitment, as my fourth year as ASD superintendent, is to make sure that that story does not go untold. So tonight, I want to start telling some of that story about how despite all of these headwinds, despite all of the obstacles, we truly are moving the needle in all the right areas. First off, let's talk about literacy. Does the general public realize that since 2023, we've seen an 11% increase in the number of students that are testing reading proficient? Right? Based off of our M-class screeners, 11%. I didn't hear any of that during this conversation in the Capitol these past few months, or really, these past years. So because we've put evidence-based practices in our schools, because we fully embrace the science of reading and put a lot of work, our teachers have put in a lot of work, we were able to move that needle 11% in just two years, and it was 10% in one year. So our team has been working really hard to make that happen for our kids. Let's talk about college career and life readiness. Does the public know that today, 750 more students are enrolled in advanced placement classes? there's continuity of services for all those populations, even if there is a change in funding from the federal government in the future? I can't predict that future, but I will tell you this, I will be prepared for that possibility because I will not forget what happened over Fourth of July weekend. I won't. So with that said, my call to action to the community is really, we need to protect our progress as a school district. And I will say, in all of these years that we've been advocating for funding, I think some of the story of our successes as a district has gotten lost. And my commitment, as my fourth year as ASD superintendent, is to make sure that that story does not go untold. So tonight, I want to start telling some of that story about how despite all of these headwinds, despite all of the obstacles, we truly are moving the needle in all the right areas. First off, let's talk about literacy. Does the general public realize that since 2023, we've seen an 11% increase in the number of students that are testing reading proficient, right, based off of our M-class screeners? 11%. I didn't hear any of that during this conversation in the Capitol these past few months, or really, these past years. So because we've put evidence-based practices in our schools, because we've fully embraced the science of reading and put a lot of work, our teachers have put in a lot of work, we were able to move that needle 11% in just two years, and it was 10% in one year. So our team has been working really hard to make that happen for our kids. Let's talk about college career and life readiness. Does the public know that today, 750 more students are enrolled in advanced placement classes than there were three years before I started, and we did that same measurement? So when you look at the actual students that are enrolled in college-bearing courses, I even found out that we have 42% more students from underserved and vulnerable subpopulations who are enrolled in AP courses. 42% more students, some of our most vulnerable populations. They're also taking advantage of these opportunities because of the work that we've put in place over the past three years. Another thing that we put into place recently is something you may have heard of called the Academies of Anchorage. That's not fully implemented yet, but we are in year two of our freshman academy implementation. And I want to report to the public that the initial results indicate that we're on the right track. So because of the board's vision for our goals, we've now started measuring the number of ninth, 10th, and 11th graders that are on track to graduate. And after just one year of freshman academy, I'm pleased to report that our percent of ninth graders that are on track to graduate went up five points from just last year alone. So just one year of putting this high-quality intervention into all of our high schools, we're on track to meet our ambitious goal of 90% of students graduating in four years in the Anchorage School District. That was a goal that we set out for, you know, five, six years down the line, and we're already making progress right now, today. And it's not even just on the academics. If you look at the freshmen's suspension rates, it looks like we've decreased suspensions 15% for our freshmen. So we've also made huge strides in improving the culture in our schools. And let's not forget about the actual bread and butter of pathways, aside from advanced placement, which should be our career and technical education classes. So we've been closely studying the rates at which students who complete CTE courses in that pathway graduate from high school. So as a district, about 80% of students graduate from ASD in four years. But for kids that complete a career pathway, that rate is 96%. And when I looked at those demographics of kids, it's reflective of the diversity that makes ASD great. So we're seeing achievement across all of our subpopulations as a result of these big initiatives that we put into place about three years ago. And like I said, our school climate is going in the right direction. We saw a decrease in suspensions for ninth graders, but I'm pleased to report that they're down 21% overall across our high school students. And I think part of the reason is because we've aggressively expanded our positive behavior interventions and supports, which we've talked about for years, but fast forward three years, now we're at over two dozen schools. So we've put a lot of thought, a lot of effort, and a lot of energy into doing things despite all of the noise and drama and infighting that I just described earlier in my presentation. And I've not even listed half of the things that we've done, and we're just getting started. So my call to action to the community is, one, remember that ASD is on the move, and across all the right metrics, we are making a difference. But the time to really take our advocacy to the next level is now, because if we don't make our story heard, all of this progress that we've achieved is in jeopardy. So my call to action to our community is we really need to protect our progress in Anchorage. If we don't tell our story, someone else is going to tell a completely different and usually untrue story. So I will be telling the truth about Anchorage School District moving forward. So I'm looking forward to my fourth year as the proud superintendent of the largest, most diverse, most incredible school district in the state. Thank you, everyone. That concludes my report. Happy first day of school to all of our kiddos that start very soon.
Thank you, Dr. Bryan. Other questions for our superintendent? Member Bellamy?
I don't have a question, but I'll take whatever he's got, because it's infectious. Thank you.
Understood. Agreed. Thank you, Member Bellamy. Thank you, Dr. Bryan, for your report. We'll move on to J., School Board and Administration Comments and Communications. Board member comments are first. We'll start with, to my left, with Member Higgins.
Thank you. Let me start by saying thank you to all the staff that we have this year for the schools. It's been a hell of a summer, and I know it's been stressful for many, not knowing what's going to go forward, how we're going to do it. But the teachers, the teacher aides, the people that keep the school clean and functioning, everyone directly involved with it, a thank you, because it's really going to be a success, and they're critical positions. So I'll start with that. Also say thank you to legislators that voted to override the veto. The legislature established what is appropriate for the BSA. The governor decided that the state didn't need to fund the BSA fully, and I don't think that was something that has a right to do it. And the legislators managed to pull off a veto override, and it will make a difference for students. And so I'm very appreciative of that. We've got a crisis coming next year. We're spending reserves this year. We won't have for next year. We still have the shortage. We have the inflationary factors. We've addressed it with one-time funds, and the question becomes one whether the legislature intends or can, most of the votes, to be able to determine how they're going to raise the adequate funds and adequately fund public education. That's their responsibility. They are responsible for determining where the funds are going to come from and creating what they need to do to do that, and then meeting the obligation of adequate funding. And that's something to be addressed and needs to be addressed in a strong way. And so I appreciate all the parents and others who have contacted legislators advocating for public schools. It makes a difference to our students. So my appreciation for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Member Donley.
Yeah, along those lines, looking at the projected deficit for next year, one thing we could do for no cost would be repeal the current National Common Core requirement for all ASD curriculum and replace it with the Statutory State of Alaska Education Standards. That wouldn't cost anything for us to do, and the argument has been that they're very similar. So why not do it? Look for anybody on the board to second me, and I'd introduce a resolution to do that. Go with the Alaska statutory standards, the Alaska standards versus the national one. So earlier, I mentioned that there were two really important holidays while we've been gone. The Juneteenth, which acknowledges the implementation of the Emancipation Proclamation. And the first sentence of the Emancipation Proclamation is that "on the first day of January in the year of our Lord 1863, all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state, the people thereof shall then be in rebellion against the United States, shall in then henceforth and forever be free. And the executive government of the United States, including the military and naval authority thereof, will recognize and maintain the freedom of such persons, and will do no act or acts to repress such persons or any of them in any efforts they may make for their actual freedom." And of course, Independence Day happened while we were gone. And when I went to the Anchorage School District, we were required to memorize the preamble of the Declaration of Independence. But tonight, I'd just like to read the first three sentences in honor of Independence Day that is mostly attributed to Thomas Jefferson, but some of which of these things were modified by other members of the Continental Congress and their meeting zone that led to this. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of those ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donley. We'll go with Member Wilson.
So I wanted to recognize a few community events that took place recently. Last Friday, our Office of Equity and Community Engagement partnered with the Alaska BiPOC Educators to host the HUGS Back-to-School Backpack Jam. They provided backpacks and supplies to over 3,400 students. So I heard great things about that one. It was amazing. There was also the Clothesline Project at Clark Middle School that took place on Saturday, August 2nd, and I've attended, didn't get a chance to attend this year, but I've attended in the past, and holy cow, there's so many clothes, so many donations at that event. Always amazing, and our kids walk out with garbage bags of clothing for school. So thank you to APD, COPS for Community, and community members, all that continue to put in all that work to support our students and families. And I wanted to give a shout-out specifically to Bonetta Orket and Steve Brown, two of our wonderful employees that put in a tremendous amount of work to make that one happen. Also, the first MECAK meeting is scheduled, and it will take place on August 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Member Holloman.
Yeah, along the same lines, I do feel like a lot of our success legislatively came from parents. I've been to a lot of constituent meetings and community council meetings where parents showed up and made it clear to their legislators they wanted support for education in Alaska. And anybody that's been engaged in this for some length of time know that school board members and educators and union members have limited impact on our legislature. But I think in this case, parents really put the pressure to let it be known that they wanted something much closer to what I would call adequate funding. They want smaller classrooms. They want the activities that we provide in our schools, and a significant number of legislators recognized that and made it so. So I really do appreciate them turning out. It's not something a lot of people enjoy. It's something a lot of people actively avoid, but it is going to be what has to happen, I think, for people to know the will of their constituents. I thank them very much for doing it.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Member Bellamy.
Thank you. So I'm excited for the new school year, and I hope our kids and families are as well. I do want, you know, there's just so much going on, and people are just doing everything they can to get ready for our kids. I do want to thank Holly Zumbro for spending some time with me this afternoon to talk about our efforts, our district's efforts, to not just keep our kids in school, but even when they get in trouble in the community, we want to embrace them and get them back in school as soon as possible. And our efforts there were, as I thought, but even better than what I thought they were. So thanks, Holly. Mr. Chair, I just need to take, I just want to thank the legislators. I'm calling them the Fabulous 45. And I'm going to read each one of their names off tonight for overriding that budget. It won't take me long, Mr. Chair. I promise to be brief. And I'm just going to do last names. That'll save us some time as well. But our Fabulous 45, we are recognizing and thanking Burke, Beinum, Carrick, Cologne, Dybert, Edman, Aishid, Elam, Fields, Foster, Galvin, Gray, Hall, Hanan, Himshut, Holland, Jimmy, Josephson, Kop, Mirz, Mina, Nelson. Sound familiar? Ruffridge, Sadler, Shraggy, Stamp, Story, Stoots, Borkman, Clayman, Cronk, Dunbar, Diesel, Gray Jackson, Hoffman, Kaufman, Kawasaki, Practisees, Keel, Merrick, Olsen, Stedman, Stevens, Tobin, looks like Wilikowski, and Yount. Thank you to our Fabulous 45. And I also want to thank all of those organizations. Parents were amazing. The Coalition for Equity in Education was amazing, and all of our professional groups. This is the first time in about 40 years that I've seen this kind of unity when it comes to our kids. And so I thank everybody for standing in the gap for our kids. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I will close our comments just with a quick reiteration of our appreciation as a board for our community, our students, our parents, our educators, support staff, building, and district leadership. This summer was not much of a break for so many in the education community, and I am apologetic that that happened, but I'm also grateful at the work that took place to ensure that the resources that our students deserved, using current formulas, were allocated ultimately. I think I've seen it iterated a couple different times online and in print that for all the work and all the advocacy, we've effectively seen a roughly $20, in a literal sense, increase to the BSA since that last fiscal year. And that isn't sufficient to cover inflation since the last FY. And so there's a lot to be happy about in terms of what was at stake, but the conversation truly is just beginning, and I think I'm looking forward to our future Communications Committee meetings where we can talk about legislative strategy and continue to harness public input, to make sure our legislature understands why the conversation must continue based on years of non-action. With that said, that completes our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, sorry about that. I was thinking of somebody else. President Jacobs, I move to adjourn.
Second. Made by Member Bellamy is our second. Holloman, signal objection, we are adjourned at 7:02 PM. Thank you, everyone.